Twenty-eight, we have incumbent Seth Hunt, Jennifer Moore-Moress, and Donna Young, all have served two full terms each. And then we have one unexpired term begins upon appointment and ends November 7, 2026. And that was an incumbent Carney Perez who resigned. So for the first seat that's currently held by Seth Hunt, I would like to nominate Sally Hedley.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Sally Hedley. Any comments, thoughts? All in favor, please say aye.
I get it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, Connie.
So all of them, they served the two terms, those are the only terms they can serve?
Well, we, not necessarily, but they did not, not any, none of these individuals applaud.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, Connie.
That's okay.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of Sally Hedley, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, for the second vacancy for Jennifer Moress, or I'm not saying that correctly, I'm sure. I would like to nominate Dan Norton.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for Dan Norton. Any comments or questions? I've known Dan for a long time. He just retired as athletic director at Auburn City Schools, and he is actually really excited about potential serving on the trade commission. All right, all in favor of Dan Norton, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
All right, the third vacancy by Donna Young, I would like to nominate Nicholas May.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for Nicholas May. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
And for the one unexpired term that begins immediately and then ends November 7, 2026, I would like to nominate Tashira Jackson.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Tashira Jackson. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and we'll confirm all four of these later on in the agenda. Educational building authority.
Yes, sir, we have one vacancy term begins November 12, 2025, and ends November 11, 2031. Incumbent Charles Pick has served two full terms. I would like to nominate Cindy Mosley.
Have a motion for Cindy Mosley. I'll second that. Any comments or thoughts? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and we'll confirm that later on in the agenda. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Whitton. Any questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager?
No, but I.
Please.
I'll just, we did have our work session last Monday on the 13th for the Farmville land use conversation, and I was wondering if the council would entertain suspending the rules so that we can remand back to the planning commission, the Farmville future land use piece, for them to review at their next planning commission meeting.
Right. City manager, what would be the protocol for handling that?
In the protocol, generally speaking, is if five members are okay with that, you don't need an official resolution or something, but there does need to be five members. And the goal of remanding it back was, is, the land use plan was not amended at the time, the annexation request was withdrawn, and so therefore was actually not amended. And while the land use plan had also been modified that night because of some things with it, it is more than an order. I've checked with the city attorney to remand it to planning commission, and legally they do need to re-review it. I've also spoken with the planning director about this possibility, it can get on this current November 13th agenda, because staff already has all the information and can re-present it to the planning commission, who can look at it again. They had previously been interested in seeing this land use change, but it didn't end up changing, and so we'll see what they say this time, this go around, if the council chooses to remand it to them to review.
And the items that are on our agenda tonight, we will handle those in what?
If you choose during this committee of the whole and the majority to remand it, then we will need an official action to postpone those items to the November 18th meeting, assuming that the planning commission does act on it at their November 13th meeting, which we expect that they would.
All right, any questions or thoughts from any of the other council members about Ms. Whitton's?
Just for the record, which rule are we suspending?
The committee of the whole rule, is that the right?
Yeah, it's just more that normally if you guys want an action or something done, you usually ask at the committee of the whole prior, but in this instance, you had a work session to discuss this whole thing. And if you're good, I think it's just indulging that you're okay suspending that rule and acting tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts? Is the council good with remanding this back to the planning commission? Is that good?
Yes.
So both items would come back on the 17th agenda, the updated land use plan plus these items that are coming before us.
Everything that would, everything that would track with it that night if you postpone it accordingly.
Yeah, thank you.
To be the 18th of November, you would see that.
Megan, do I need to take a hand vote or anything on this?
I think just all those in favor, aye, and whoever know, and just make sure.
All in favor of pursuing Ms. Whitton's request to remand this back to the planning commission, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, we'll move forward to that. I have something I wanted to bring to the council, so if that, if that work session, a discussion came forward that involved the staff communicating some, I would call those concerns about some infrastructure, traffic, and stormwater, particularly on the west side of downtown, and their concern, as we heard, is that due to the fast pace of growth over there, that they're, that maybe it's outpacing some of our infrastructure build out. All of us, including myself, have received complaints about certainly traffic in downtown and on, and particularly Glen Avenue, but we heard, we heard some concerns from the staff, the council was able to ask some questions, and I just, this is our first meeting since then, and I just want to make sure that there's no, that the council is either ready to take some steps or where we might be tonight. And so, city manager, if you could kind of maybe summarize some of the conversations that were brought forward from the staff at that work session, just to remind us of the concerns that y'all shared that night.
Well, generally speaking, as you indicated, mayor, you know, we hear from citizens on the regular that, as you do, about traffic in the downtown vicinity. Two recent development agreements that you have approved, one of the things that you heard is mitigating circumstances for traffic studies. We are left to minor adjustments to signal timing and not a lot else, that other choices out there tend to be road widens, adding lanes, things like that. It's a little difficult in our more urban areas, you know, wiping out existing buildings and things are really not an option. So we're starting to see some changes from an infrastructure standpoint that we've not seen before. It is our job to obviously inform the city council when we're seeing data that we don't normally see in certain areas of town, especially combined with concerns being raised. In addition, we do have some stormwater challenges here and there. I'll be very clear, though, that every project that is being approved along the way is meeting criteria that's currently on the books. We're doing that on a case-by-case basis, but we are definitely challenged by the fact that we're starting to get to a traffic standstill with some things with limited options under our current umbrella to mitigate. Our city engineer has some latitude in that realm and uses that to the best of her ability, but we are also embarking in this fiscal year on both the citywide traffic study. It's time for that update, and we do still owe you a work session about the current one. And we're also embarking on major changes to the zoning ordinance. So all of this is kind of culminating, and when I say major changes, it means we have tried and, or trying and seeking out with our new planning director to make the ordinance more understandable and usable for people. I didn't say that it's going to be crazy restrictive or a lot is changing, it needs to be more understandable, but it is a good time to also look at regulatory items we have run into with recent developments, a number of very interesting dialogue with private sector individuals about how they think that they get to interpret the zoning ordinance, which legally they do not. That is the responsibility of the planning director, and some things that need to be clarified about everything from how height is averaged to some, to some other items going on. And so there's a few things brewing, particularly in the urban core and urban neighborhood west, that are a little bit challenging at the moment. However, the council has the right to invoke some sort of formal legal pause, which comes in the form of an ordinance, or staff can continue doing work that needs to be done on these things without projects pausing. And that means if we were to proceed, you'd be proceeding with some form of moratorium. That is an option. I'm not saying that that's something you have to do. That is a tool in the toolbox that doesn't allow development as defined by the moratorium until some studies are done and additional information comes to light. We have invoked that before, and again, it's not a recommendation of the staff, it is an awareness that these are the tools that you have. There are always projects that are considering building in our community, we're fortunate for that, but what we're trying to do is get the best projects possible. We did say we want a density in this area, particularly urban neighborhood west, we're getting that. But if you've noticed, when you drive down Glen Avenue, we have a million and one crosswalks that are quite robust with people in them. Magnolia is hard to get across, we're making adjustments, but some of these things take time. We have to move cars and people. Streets don't go through campus anymore, they're just things to be looked at. Our water and sewer is doing fairly well, we study those unilaterally, and we also study them on a case-by-case basis, but we certainly didn't model years ago that, that all the density could happen at once in specific areas and what have you, and it's always good to take a second look. But any project that has been approved, absolutely we have adequate infrastructure for, but in the eyes of our citizens, I'm not sure that they believe we have adequate transportation infrastructure for much of anything, particularly in the downtown area. There are not a lot of major tools in the toolbox to deal with aspects of that, but there are more about wider sidewalks, bike lanes, different signal technologies, and sometimes it would do us some good to have a little bit of time to review those. But it's up to the council.
Does anybody from the council have any questions or thoughts based on either the work session or my comments or the city manager's comments? Any thoughts? Sure, Kim. I would welcome the opportunity for the staff to review these options that you spoke of and make a presentation to us or some suggestions to us when it comes to some of these projects. I mean, this is, it should not be a surprise, you know, eight years ago, we had the keep Auburn lovely bunch that we tried to limit some development. The fact that we have traffic standstill and that we're approaching stormwater dispersion is, should not be a surprise to anybody. So I would think that it would be appropriate for us to ask the staff to study it and come back to us with some suggestions.
So if the staff studies it, I think the question is, do they study it while we rock along with no moratorium, or do we entertain a moratorium while they study it? Is that the, kind of the two avenues?
That's correct, and we will gladly go in either direction. I think that the challenge is that, you know, a moratorium, sometimes a big scary word for people, but at the end of the day, it's a tool that you have from a health, safety, welfare perspective, and I'll be very clear about that, and our city attorneys here can speak to that. Traffic is a health, safety, welfare concern, and by no means does this mean if you were to take a pause via a moratorium that you're stopping development in these areas at all. And it would likely only mean that we're looking at multi-unit development, particularly along private dormitory realms, the highest density things. That's not been clearly defined yet. We do have the option of bringing a draft ordinance to you for your review, which you wouldn't have to act on, but I certainly don't want to bring a draft ordinance forward for something like a moratorium if that's not what the council wants. If they just want us to proceed with studying, that's what we'll do.
Questions, thoughts? Max?
This ordinance, like you were just saying, it would be, it could be restricted to some pretty specific types of?
Specific zones, absolutely.
And then timing-wise, it can stop it in at our discretion?
Timing-wise, we'd said it, it'd say six months initially, that's pretty common, could be extended. The council also has the ability, if you were to adopt one, to bring forward and say we actually want to?
Stop it.
To stop it.
Okay.
Yep, you have, that's in the hands of the council. You can repeal an ordinance at any time. But it does give us the ability to study with certain things, to make sure that they're out there before you and you know. Not something we take lightly, and it's not something I'm advocating for. It's our job to inform the city council when things get to a certain point that we feel that you need to know. And while we can handle everything that we've got, we're also getting big dissatisfaction among our citizens, employees at the university, and so on. And we really do want students to live where it's walkable, but I think we need to make sure that we have the best regulatory framework in place from a health, safety, welfare perspective to do that.
Questions from the council, thoughts? So we have, we have some options here. As Megan mentioned, the staff can put together an ordinance that we can consider in two weeks. We do not have to vote on the ordinance that night, we can read it, we can study it, we can deny unanimous consent, we can put it off. Or we could, or we could do, you know, we could just not do, take any action related to an ordinance that would slow down progress and let the staff work on some of these studies and understand that development would continue. So those are, those are a couple of choices we have. And it takes five of us to move forward on something, so I just, I'm not sure where everybody is tonight, and I want, but I wanted to bring this forward because we haven't had a meeting to talk about this since our last work session.
I don't know that I'm ready to vote for a moratorium. I think we've got to make it fair to everybody, and it's just, it's come out of nowhere on me. I know we talked about it eight years ago, but all of a sudden, we're talking about shutting down, not building anything downtown because of the traffic. I mean, I don't, I don't like surprises, and this was certainly a surprise to me from the get-go, and so, you know. I would hurt, I certainly hope we don't have some ulterior motive if somebody pushes something that doesn't need to be pushed. I'm just, I think it ought to be fair to everybody, and I don't want, we've proved so many things down there, and I don't think it's fair, I just, I just, I really want to hear more about it. I'm not, I'm not ready to vote for a moratorium at this point, but I'm only one person.
And when you say hear more about it, chief, would that be?
I want to know why we all of a sudden think we need, I know we've got bad traffic problems downtown. We've had bad problems downtown for traffic for about 40 years now. I know there's a traffic problem, but why we all of a sudden think we ought to shut down some, do some drastic changes? I don't, I don't understand that totally. I mean, I just, I might be for a moratorium if I have something to base it on more importantly, but I'm not prepared in two weeks to come out here to meet and vote for, to shut down downtown development. I don't know that you, I'm not a engineer, but I don't know there's as much you can do to help downtown traffic at this point. Horse is kind of out the barn on that one.
Speaking of, Megan, is there anything our city engineer would offer to their observations on what's going on related to traffic and?
Yeah, I'll have her speak to it, it's, it's, I think to chief's point, nobody's saying it's going to fix it, it's how do you mitigate, there's a difference. And the difference lately is we have two traffic studies for two very dense developments that are beginning to say the only tool that you have, short of wiping out buildings and widening roads, is signal timing. And so the goal here is to begin to look at options beyond signal timing, that's one of them, and technology items that can be put in our regulatory framework that require people to, to say, I don't know that this is an option right now, but they'll have to donate more to a sidewalk fund where we can widen more sidewalks, build more bike lanes, whatever it is, those are the things that need to be studied. Traffic's not the only thing, but it's one of the things. Brandy?
Yeah, I think Megan hits on a good point that we need to look at more options than just the, the traffic deficiencies. We are at most of the intersections downtown during peak periods, we're at maximum, you know, we're at failing levels of service. That's, that's kind of our threshold and our measure is a level of service, and we have a lot of those that are failing. And the mitigations for those is additional lanes and things. We are tweaking signal timings as often as we can and as much as we can, but there's only so much we can do with the existing amount of asphalt that we have. So again, to the point of, do we, do we start trying to take down buildings to build, to widen roads, you know, that's not really an option. What additional, to your, and Chief Dawson, you know, you mentioned we've had problems for 40 years. We've done a lot in that 40 years. We've added coordinated signal systems, we've added a lot of things to our signals to make them smarter and more efficient, but we're running out of those technologies that we can do as well. So it's just giving us an opportunity to do some studies, some broad studies with this comprehensive traffic study, to see what other efforts we might could make.
And to the chief's point, we're going to be doing those anyway as part of this traffic study, it's whether or not projects continue during that timeframe.
I'm all for that, and I think we do need to study it, but it was a lot more areas need studying besides downtown. North Donahue Drive is, I mean.
Yeah, they're, they're all going to be studied as part of the citywide traffic study.
I'm just a ex-retired police, I can tell you right now, North Donahue Drive needs to be four lanes all the way out there, 72, that intersection 72 and Donahue needs to be fixed. Intersection at Longleaf and South College needs to be fixed, no right-hand turn lane, it backs traffic up. I mean, we've got a lot, we, we want to talk about infrastructure, we've got a lot of infrastructure we need to catch them all around the whole city. Sure, Jordan Parkway ought to have a turn lane the whole way around. I don't, I don't know that it's nobody's fault, but it's, it's, it's there now, the whole city needs to be looked at and some improvements made.
When is this traffic study going to be initiated or completed or whatever?
It was approved for this fiscal year, so we are talking with consultants now to try to get a scope together. So we should have that on the next, account of council agenda within the next few months.
And do we have some kind of a scorecard on how we implemented recommendations from the last citywide traffic study?
As far as a scorecard, I'm not sure, you know, we've?
Whatever recommendations were made, have we implemented them?
Not all of them, no, sir. We have implemented probably around half of them, I forget the number, I've done some.
Yeah, that's the one that we need to have the work session about. At the end of the day, with, with implementation, there's some implementation that is not possible at times, like there may be a right turn lane that's, that's needed, everybody can agree on that, but we have a half million dollars in fiber optic utilities that have to be moved to do that, so that becomes a lesser priority while we do other things. And so there's, and there are some things, like one of the suggestions in the study, I didn't agree with it at the time, I was not in the seat at the time, is putting Dean Road on a road diet to make it two lanes in each direction with a center turn lane from Thatch all the way to East University Drive. Don't think that was a good idea, but it was in there. So sometimes there's some good ideas that don't stick for other practical reasons, and so, Brandy, how long will the study take?
It should take about a year.
Before you see recommendations off of that? That's going to happen anyway. We're going to be working, we're bringing forward in the next several months a consultant for the zoning ordinance, same thing.
So what would if, if we proposed a moratorium for a six-month period and we would not have results or answers to these questions and?
We can write the scope differently to focus on a specific area first and get those results first before the rest of the city. There are ways to do that, that's at the pleasure of the council. If you said you got six months to get some stuff to us, then we're going to move in that direction as rapidly as possible. Depends on what your lens is or is not.
So we could get answers to those questions in six months or possibly, is there an expedited timeline on that, or what is?
Again, the year is a formal report, but we can certainly have analyses, numbers crunched. The goal would be to get traffic data in the spring and then to be able to start crunching those numbers. So, yeah, we could definitely, for certain areas of town, have results that we could present in six months.
And we can do a separate scope for this area, if that's what we needed to do, and separate the two. I mean, there's lots of options there, it depends on what your lens is.
And how would the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How would the zoning amendments track with that timeframe?
Yeah, so I would say I think a zoning, a comprehensive zoning update probably is about, I think anywhere from kind of 18 to 30 months, so really kind of looking at about two, two and a half years kind of in total, but I think, kind of like, like city manager talks about, that we could narrow down the scope and kind of focus on, kind of expedite different projects, different parts of the zoning ordinance review for different zoning districts and kind of different areas in town, just kind of from a, looking at it from a different geographic area than, than the rest of the zoning ordinance. So in total, probably about two and a half years, but I guess we could expedite, like I said, some of those smaller parts where we had a much more narrow scope where we're looking at to solve specific problems.
And coordinate it with the traffic study?
And I guess, to me, six months on my end probably seems kind of tight, because I, on, on, like, looking at it from like the zone inside, I think probably quickest week, probably turn around something, probably a year, even on some of the targeted stuff.
So we would not have recommendations or answers?
I'd have to go back and look, very few of our moratoriums have, have not been extended because information has come in, it begs new information and what have you. You can always do that to see where we are. It just depends on what you want to do. It's, for us to get a timeline together right now in this moment in this meeting would not be wise for me to suggest, we, we have some estimates from our experts here because we're gearing up to do these plans anyway. We can study specific areas faster, but in, in reality, to study it right, it's going to take six to 12 months at a minimum.
I, for me, I feel like getting a, getting a draft of an ordinance in front of me so I could look at, as well as getting some additional information about timelines and maybe possibly some solutions that we're looking at, or we could be looking at within the next two weeks. That would help me, I feel like that would help the council move this forward. It would personally help me better understand how best to make my decision. Tyler, I want to ask a redundant question, and please forgive me, but when you say a draft, tell me, what is your interpretation of what a draft is? Is a draft something we consider an official meeting? Is a draft something that the city manager sends you through email that you look at on your own time? How would you describe draft? Something that's sent to me that I'd be able to look at on my own time. I, I would like to see something on paper to see what the scope of that would be. The proposed time, timeline on it, and that's.
Okay.
Max, I know you were about to say something.
I was going back to the traffic studies. Traffic studies that have been completed for these two projects versus the citywide traffic study, is there a great deal of difference between the two types of studies, or is it pretty similar in nature? I mean, we have some of that data, I guess, available to us already.
The comprehensive traffic study will have some of the same elements that is in these other studies, but it does reach a lot broader. It does look at, you know, future growth, not just this development, but growth of the entire area.
Okay, great, thank you.
The traffic study offers solutions to the problems, it identifies, or it just tells us what we already know we've got? We know we've got a problem.
It does offer solutions.
The citywide traffic study, yes.
Megan, the whole idea of having a moratorium as a health, safety, and welfare, it has to be justified through that, correct? I know our city attorney's here, could you have him speak to, to that?
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, mayor. In relation to a moratorium, it's the same standard that the council would have before it for any development regulations. So in Alabama law, the council is charged with creating regulations for development within our own community. Alabama appellate courts have been very, very clear that they will not substitute their own opinions, their own judgment for that of a city council, so long as the city council's decisions are based on safety, health, and welfare considerations and are backed up by evidence, by data. Where Alabama appellate courts have struck down or, or even repealed ordinances that have been passed by local municipal governments related to development is when there's been no evidence or there's been no real safety, health, and welfare connection. Both of those kind of veer off into what the appellate courts call arbitrary and capricious decisions by the council. But so long as there is evidence, so long as there is data to support a decision, then Alabama appellate courts will allow that decision to stand from a general perspective. The only, I can think of one particular case in which the Alabama appellate court reversed a local city council's decision to not allow a gas station to go forward in the Homewood area of Alabama, because during the council session, the council members expressed concerns about traffic that would be impacted by this new development, but they had no data to back that up. And so the same rules apply to a moratorium. And so if a moratorium would be considered by the council, so long as there are safety, health, and welfare reasons to support that decision, and there's data to back up that decision, then I believe from a legal perspective, the council would be on very. and there's data to back up that decision, then I believe from a legal perspective, the council would be on very solid ground. I will also say that traffic is certainly a safety, health, and welfare consideration that Alabama appellate courts have recognized as a reason to make development decisions by a local government.
Thank you, Paul.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
So if our city engineer has determined that we have failed intersections, I don't know what criteria that takes, or that we are at, at capacity, is her judgment and her analysis sufficient to, to be considered evidence?
I would certainly consider that, and I would defend that in court.
That, that is what you would define as data coming from the.
Traffic studies absolutely are solid data that the council could consider. And again, we do have data for, in my understanding, the intersections that the city engineer already mentioned currently. What I think is a more robust set, set of data would be the comprehensive traffic study.
Would it be possible to piggyback on Councilman Adams' request of a draft ordinance? Could we, could we look at a work session on 11-3 with an advertised ordinance? It wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't be a draft ordinance. It would be an ordinance, but ordinances can be amended. That would include, the, the work session would include the ordinance language, a current traffic study for that, for the area being identified, any recommendations that may or may not have been implemented already, along with timelines of a focused study for traffic for those areas, a timeline of focused zoning amendments for those areas for us to discuss in, in advance of the meeting on 11-4, which at that point, we could either, a host of decisions could be made regarding that ordinance. But for advertising purposes and for sake of time and so forth, is that a possibility?
It's a possibility. We'll have, we'll have to move quickly. Drafting the ordinance itself is, is the simple part because we have a lot of examples of them. We've done them before. The timelines are the things that are a little bit challenging for us to produce at that, that date. But we can certainly try to get there and to that. The question is, just having a work session on something that is advertised for the, the fourth, like it's on the agenda already, and you just want to have a work session to give yourselves more time to talk about it. Because you can also collectively, you know, remove something from the agenda or otherwise in the majority of you at a given time. So it's, it's however you want to do it. We, we will be ready to do that to the best of our ability at that time.
Summarize what your, what your thought was again, Ms. Witten.
It would be to ask Megan, to ask staff to, or to have an ordinance that would be advertised and ready for the November 4th meeting that would outline the parameters of a moratorium, including timeline. But in addition to that, we would have the opportunity on the third to have an in-depth conversation about the current traffic study for that area, any recommendations or solutions that have been implemented or can be implemented. Also a timeline, or even if it's a conservative timeline, of a focused study for the traffic and also anything that can be added for the zoning piece of that, even though that's not necessarily the focus of the requested pause. And then that way, we would be able to then determine on the 11-4th meeting, do we move, postpone, amend, move forward, trash it, all the above. But that gives time to notice it, time to discuss it, time to consider it, and then also make amendments if needed to the ordinance. And I'm not, and this is, and by no means me advocating one way or the other. It's just if this is a, is serious of an issue, then we owe it to make sure that we discuss it in, in every bit of detail that we can. And if that means the ugly word of a moratorium, then by all means, let's do it. Discuss it rather.
So in other words, you're saying let's discuss it before it actually goes on the agenda on the fourth. Let's discuss it on the third.
You're saying to learn more about it, to be, to give you the ability to make the most informed decision possible, whether that's proceed, postpone, withdraw, do whatever on the fourth. But you're taking time that's not during a city council meeting. It's a public meeting, by the way.
Of course.
And public would be invited, but you're taking time to learn all you can learn about it before the next meeting. Yeah, the day before.
So basically a work session and then go ahead and advertise it for the fourth.
Yeah, we come out with the agenda on the 31st.
If you have to pull it off, we pull it off.
Correct.
Yeah.
Or postpone or amend, yeah.
Or we could turn it down.
Correct.
We have a lot of options every night.
And the ordinance on the fourth, should that be the direction, would be attached to, would have a public hearing attached to it if we wanted it?
I don't recall. I don't think it's required, yeah. And of course, you always offer citizens communications on agenda items without public hearings for the five minutes. So you've got many ways in which you can do that.
I think we would want to have a public hearing if we move forward with that. You know, the word moratorium is a provocative word. I've been a part of making decisions on a couple of those, and they're extremely uncomfortable. And I certainly appreciate where Chief is coming from, and I appreciate our staff's concerns. And frankly, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how I feel about all this, but I respect our staff. I know what people have told me. I see it firsthand as I drive back and forth to work every day. And I know, to me, it's a challenge. And I'd like to see some more information and hear some more defined reasons as to why this is such a challenge that we need to take this step. But this is, this is a, this is a big deal, and I don't want to make, make any of this seem easy because it's not. It's a big, big decision.
I agree with what you're saying, Mayor, but at the same time, I just, I mean, you hadn't know this was coming. Kelly said that pretty well, I think. I mean, you put on apartments down there, you're going to have traffic problems. And I don't, frankly, I'm, I'm excited to see what an expert says we can do about that traffic down there because I'd, I'd really like to know.
Well, I'd like to clarify. It is, they're mitig, we're looking for mitigating things. Part of this isn't flow traffic, but there are areas in which you could put a project that I don't know how you're going to get ingress and egress in there without making. We have railroad tracks. We've got all kinds of things without making conditions worse than they already are. And so some of this is just looking for more mitigating things that people can do. It's not about projects not developing and not developing to where, you know, there's multi-story developments that have people who park their cars and walk mainly in the downtown area. It's about the factors that don't exist in our regulations that, that are mitigating factors at the moment that could give you and our citizens comfort that people are doing their, their, their share of what they need to do to help keep it from not getting 100 times worse than it is. Nobody said it's going to improve it greatly. I think it's, we're at a point is, is are, are we going to get, I mean, a football Friday afternoon doesn't count, but it takes a long time to exit the downtown area on those days because we just have more cars. What we're trying to do is deal with the average day of people coming and going from campus in these areas, keeping people safe and moving traffic to the best of our ability, particularly at the peak hour, and that making sure that developments going in are, are doing their part to not make it worse than it already is. That's it. It's not the notion that it's going to stop new traffic completely or stop development completely because that's not the goal here. The goal is to provide better mitigating circumstances.
I agree with everything you said, but my only thing is, you know, I'm personally, I want to make sure we're fair to everybody.
Yes, sir.
Both sides.
And that would be part of what this would be about, but I understand what you're saying.
I'd be very excited to see us traffic study has, tell us what we do with traffic downtown Auburn. I'd be more happy for that. I can't wait for the citywide because we've got some places we need to know what we can do to fix it. So we get it done and continue the growth we've been seeing, but we, we got to get it done before we can keep going too much further.
And look, Chief, you, you and I have talked about this a lot. You know, we approved a budget that the, that the biggest part of the capital investments in the future of this city planned right now are, are for traffic issues. I looked, I went back and looked at our budget today over the next six years. If we were to complete all the projects, you're talking about $150 million that would be invested in trying to make traffic easier and better in our community. So we are aware of these challenges. We've heard our citizens, and I believe we've passed a budget that is going to address all of that. So I just want to make that clear to everyone.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Could, I'd just like to return to the hypothetical order of operations here. We're talking about a possible moratorium that would be defendable should it be taken to court. So that, it means that we would be waiting for some traffic studies that would reveal yea or nay that we have issues. So in the, in the, in the hypothetical world of a moratorium, it would be some way, some months down the way, correct?
Correct. We'd also be looking at more infrastructure just besides traffic. We focused on traffic, but stormwater, again, while every project that's coming forward meets our regulations, we need to take a greater comprehensive look at some things. There's a lot of questions people have. A lot of things are being shifted, those kinds of things. Water and sewer are looked at constantly, but they will be looked at again. So it's deeper than just traffic specifically in that area. Certain sized pipes can only carry so much water and so much sewer at a distance without being upsized or other things, and we'll continue to look at those as we have been.
One more, one more thing. I guess to, to Chief Dawson's point, it, it kind of caught me as, as a surprise as well. It was the first time we actually heard it come out of the city manager's statements or the staff's statements that we were at or near capacity was this past work session. So that to me is, is kind of a flashpoint, and that's why it's important we consider this now. I agree, Chief, that we need to make sure everybody is treated fairly, but the fact of the matter that it hadn't been brought up before as a, a serious shortfall or potential serious shortfall is what makes it now very important. And the other thing, you did mention that the chief engineer, city engineer's assessments to date would constitute enough evidence to move forward. Is that correct?
In relation to passing a moratorium, there has to be data and it has to be related to a safety, health, and welfare.
Right.
Reason. Traffic is one of those reasons. There is data to support a decision to push the pause button while the staff on the council's behalf gathers more data for more changes or potential changes to be considered in this council's role in setting the development regulations for the city.
Is a pause a moratorium?
Yes, that's exactly. The purpose of the moratorium is to put a pause on development so that more data can be gathered for, to support more robust changes in the zoning ordinance and the design and construction manual in all forms of regulation this council endorses for development in the city.
I guess, maybe I'm not asking it correctly. Is the city manager's, or excuse me, the city engineer's assessment to date based on whatever study she has seen or, or had access to and/or her observations of current situation? Is that sufficient evidence for us to have a pause?
Yes, I believe it is.
All right, thank you.
It is, and I'll remind everybody that data is, is, is not just the opinion of the city engineer. It's, there are standards and so on. Yeah, it's, she's evaluating that, but yeah, there, there are industry standards. So, and again, it's not just about traffic. It's about a lot of things, and density begets a lot of this. So there, there's a lot more that goes into it, and I'll remind you, it's not for all development. It's some types of development we would be looking at, not everything. If somebody's going to put a three-bedroom townhouse in urban neighborhood west, that's depending on how this is written. If it's a fee simple lot or, you know, it has to be more than one to be a townhouse. But there are some things that people could do that they could still continue to do. It's the higher density stuff that begets more concern.
And specifically, the recommendation would be urban neighborhood west and urban core?
Urban core, including the college edge over like district.
Those would be the two sections of the city, so.
Yeah, not, not any of. Not at the moment where we're seeing things. It's where we have the highest level of density.
And you could be so specific as to a bed count or a density number or.
Be certain things as defined in the zoning ordinance. Yep. That's something we'd have to draft and get to you, so.
All right, so Ms. Witten has put a, an, an idea out there that on the third, which is a Monday, we would have a work session, that we would have a draft of this and that the staff would bring to us more information for us to consider and that this draft would be advertised to be on the meeting of the fourth, which is the next day. And then at that point in time, the city council has every option available, from approving to postponing, to not taking any action on, to turning down and denying.
Correct.
Would there be any information provided for the council before the third? Is that, is that going to be all the staff can get done here with the next 13 days to provide that information on the third, I'm guessing?
Yeah, there wouldn't be. Well, you obviously get the information as the public would on Friday, the 31st of October. Because it would go out with the council agenda. If that's, if, if that is the scenario in which you use, it would go out in your packets that Friday. Not all the backup data per se, but the ordinance itself, yeah.
So is the council good with moving forward with that action? Okay, it's a work session on the third. It'll be on the fourth, vote of the fourth. We'll, we can decide how we want to handle it the night of the fourth. Having a work session on the third. And certainly in the meantime, the community has heard this discussion, and I'm sure there'll be commentary on that, okay, that we should all expect, every one of us, all right?
And I think to be clear, right now, you're just reviewing data and information. The council's making no moves. The staff's not recommending you make a specific move. We're just looking at data that we have and concerns, and that's it.
And a work session on the third.
Correct.
But you would be providing a draft ordinance that would be on the.
It would go out on October 31st with the council agenda. That's correct.
But it would be on the council meeting of November the fourth.
Correct.
And I would recommend that we advertise a public hearing for that meeting if that's the will of the council.
We're just going to say recommended on the agenda because.
Okay.
When we say required, it's required by law. So recommended is your indulgence to open one.
All right, anything else for the committee of the whole?
Mayor, we have a, a number of agenda items that an applicant this afternoon, all Hickory Creek development items have been withdrawn from the agenda. So that's 9C4, the annexation, 9C5, the request to rezone to LDD, 9C6, the request for PDD, and 10A5, a conditional use request. All four of those items have been withdrawn, and I'll remind you when we get to those points on the agenda.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, we'll move forward with our regular agendas. Call to order at Autumn City Council Meeting for October the 21st, 2025. Certainly welcome everybody that's joined us here in the council chambers, as well as those that are listening to us on WA and I and they're watching through our streaming services. Lindsay with the roll call.
Adams.
Here.
Coblenz.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Grithwell.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Earlier tonight during the committee of the whole, the city council appointed Sally Hedley, Dan Nord, Nicholas May, and Tashara Jackson to the tree commission and Cindy Mosley to the education building authority. Mayor Lieutenant Witten requested that we move the Farmville Greenwood Village items off of our agenda tonight. That we will deal with that in a minute, but that that would be remanded back to the planning commission to evaluate the land use related to that potential development. The city council agreed to do that, so the planning commission will take that up in November, and hopefully the city council will be considering these items that we will be not taking action on tonight on the second meeting in November. And then we just had a very lengthy conversation about the west side of downtown, as well as the urban. as the urban core, related to large-scale multifamily housing, and the concerns that the staff has brought forward related to traffic and general infrastructure and stormwater concerns. And so the city council will be having a work session on Monday, October the 3rd, where there'll be more information provided in a draft and an ordinance that will be on the city council meeting of November the 4th, that the city council will consider at that time, okay? All right, before I get started with some other announcements, I know we have a special guest here tonight, and later on this week, the Pine Hill Cemetery Tour will be taking place, and we certainly encourage everyone here, if you want to appreciate and learn about the history of the town that you live in, you are welcome to be a part of a fascinating tour where you learn about the individuals who have populated this town and have done interesting things in this town. And tonight, we have a special guest for the Pine Hill Tour, and I didn't know if she'd like to make a statement or say something to the city council. I would hate for you to dress up like that and not say anything. Please.
Because they didn't have my expectancy. Do I speak?
Do you live on Armstrong Street?
I do.
In Pine Hill Cemetery?
For most of the, most of the year this year, yes, I've lived on Armstrong Street. My name is Shannon Walden, and I'm here to invite everyone to the Pine Hill Cemetery Lantern Tour this Thursday night and Friday night. It's from 6:30 to 8:30, and it's a community celebration, celebration of the people who were buried there, the residents of Pine Hill, and it's a fundraiser for the Auburn Heritage Association. It's our largest fundraiser. We do historic markers that you'll see around town. Tickets are $15 at the gate. We have parking at East Sanford on Thursday night with shuttles to bring you to and from the school to the cemetery, and then on Friday night, we're going to park behind the University Alumni Center. And we have 12 different characters that will be featured this year, and our own, our actual mayor is actually going to be portraying a former mayor, Mayor Lampkin, I believe, and he was mayor of like 150 years ago.
1891.
He may or may not have had traffic issues back then, but he could have.
That year, that lot of growth, 300 people.
Yes, so anyway, if you love Auburn and you love Auburn history, you need to be there this Thursday and Friday night. Thank you for your time.
Which ghost are you?
I really don't have a, I'm kind of the ringleader. So, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Yeah, thank you. Next week also, Alabama Rural Ministry will be conducting their No More Shacks fundraiser, and you will see Lisa and her crew in front of the Wesley Foundation on Gay Street raising money and awareness for their outstanding work that they do here in this community, and I encourage you to drop by and say hello to them. If you've got some extra change or dollar bills in your pocket to give them, they do a fantastic job. And then next week will be the final night that we'll ever have downtown trick or treat. I want to commend our staff for creating this event a long time ago, and I appreciate their hard, hard, hard work. Frankly, it has outgrown our physical plan of downtown, and, but we do look forward to celebrating, and I look forward to giving away the awards for the best dressed and the best costumes, but we'll have fun next week with the downtown trick or treat. And I appreciate our merchants downtown staying open and being good sports about being a part of the downtown trick or treat. All right, anyone else have an announcement they'd like to make tonight? Yes, sir, Sonny.
I went to Hay Day this past Wednesday, 15th October, at the Hay Day Market. I really enjoyed being there, and I even got the T-shirt to prove it. I want to say how impressed I am and I was with the members of the Student Government Association who worked so very hard to make this event a success. They really went the extra mile to recognize a great Auburn tradition. Auburn is a friendly town every day of the year. So next time you pass someone on the sidewalks of Auburn, say hey to them, or war eagle. Normally it brings a smile to their face and an unexpected hey back to you, so war eagle.
Thank you, Sonny. Glad you had fun over there. Anyone else? Okay, speaking of, we'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications. How are you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Doing fine.
My name is Ashley Burke, and I serve as Director of City Relations within the Auburn Student Government Association, and we have a lot of exciting things going on in Auburn. So Dr. Stewart from Campus Security came and spoke at SJA last night, and we were able, he was able to get feedback from the students, and Cabinet also visited the Rec and Wellness Center on October 13th, and it was a great opportunity for us to get feedback and also hear about the future projects in the making. On October 17th, FMA hosted its annual leadership summit where a panel, including Coach Tommy Tuberville, the CFO of Home Depot, and the Vice Chairman of Global Investments Banking shared characteristics of lifetime leaderships with the business students. We held our, and then we held our annual Hay Day event on October 15th, and it was a complete success with dozens of volunteers handing out thousands of name tags and encouraging students to meet and talk with other students they have not beforehand, all starting with a simple hey. Ashlyn Powers was crowned Miss Auburn University of 2026 after competing against 11 other contestants. Ashlyn's service initiative focused on being the power and empowering individuals with disabilities. We are having panel and executive interviews beginning this week, as well as IFC executive interviews, and then lastly, basketball tip-off on the plains is on the horizon, and we are so excited for an upcoming basketball game against Memphis on the 30th in Atlanta at the State Farm Meridianum. Thank you, and war eagle.
Thank you, thank you very much, war eagle. Okay, this time is citizens' communications on items on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak to the city council about an item on tonight's agenda that does not have a public hearing, this would be the time for you to come forward and do that. You have five minutes to speak to the council, and we'd ask that you give us your name and address for the record. On the back, under resolutions, you will see that all five of those items, and really only four now because one has been withdrawn, those have public hearings, so if you'd like to address this council about any one of those items, please wait for the public hearings, and we'll allow you to speak at that time. But if you'd like to address us to council about anything else, now would be your time. Come forward. Anyone? Okay, we'll move ahead with city manager's communications.
Mayor, just a quick reminder, items, everything having to do with Hickory Creek development have been withdrawn from the agenda. That's 9C4, 9C5, 9C6, and 10A5.
Okay. Would that also include 8B1?
No, that's a different development.
Okay, thanks.
Two different ones. But I have a feeling that's about to be removed from the consent agenda for other reasons.
Okay, let's move ahead with the consent.
You ready for the consent agenda? Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, I would like to remove 8B1.
8B1, right? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, 8B1.
Item 8B1 authorizes an infrastructure development agreement with 68V Greenwood Village 2026 LLC. This item was postponed from the October 7th, 2025 meeting.
I would like to move to postpone to a date certain of November 18th, so that it follows with the future land use recommendation from Planning Commission.
Second. All right, have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Stand up.
Do I have a motion second? Any further questions, comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move forward. Ordinances.
Item 9A authorizes the 2026 severe weather preparedness sales tax holiday, exempting specified items from the city's sales tax. The dates are February 20th through 22nd, 2026. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce, I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing a hearing done, any discussion? Okay, Lindsay with the roll call.
Witten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Anders.
Yes.
Item 9B authorizes the installation of school zone signs along Grove Hill Road in the vicinity of Ogletree Elementary and Lake Wilmore Park. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Motion second. Anyone have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing a hearing done, any comments or questions?
Thank you to staff for getting this one on this week and getting this established. We appreciate it.
Gladly, it's been in the works for some time. We had some right-of-way things that we had to look at. It was actually in the plans for the Lake Wilmore Park construction, just a little bit of delay over some right-of-way questions we had.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Lindsay.
Adams.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Anders.
Yes.
Item 9C1 is a request to prezone approximately 53.5 acres of property located on West Farmville Road between Pepperwood Trail and Auburn Lakes Road to development district housing. Planning Commission did not recommend approval of this request by a vote of 2 to 7 at its August 14th meeting. This is the second reading, a motion is needed and a public hearing is required.
I would like to move to postpone to a date certain of November 18th.
Second. All right, we have a motion as second to postpone to November the 18th. Any other discussion or questions on that? Okay, do I need to take a roll call vote?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, Lindsay with the roll call.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Anders.
Yes.
Item 9C2 is a request to prezone approximately 53.5 acres of property located on West Farmville Road between Pepperwood Trail and Auburn Lakes Road that has been prezoned, or could have been prezoned, but has not been, to apply the planned development district overlay designation. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of 5 to 4 at its August 14th meeting. This is the second reading, a motion is needed and a public hearing is required.
I'd like to move to postpone to a date certain of November the 18th.
Second. Okay, we have a motion as second to postpone to November 18th. Any comments or questions? Okay, Lindsay, roll call.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Anders.
Yes.
Item 9C3 is a request to annex approximately 53.5 acres of property known as the Samples Property located on West Farmville Road between Pepperwood Trail and Auburn Lakes Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request by a vote of 9 to 0 at its August 14th meeting. This is second reading, a motion is needed.
I'd like to move to postpone to a date certain of November the 18th.
Second. Have a motion as second. Any comments or questions? All right, roll call, please, Lindsay.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Anders.
Yes.
Item 9C4 has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item 9C5 has been withdrawn from, by the applicant. Item 9C6 has also been withdrawn by the applicant, and item 9C7 is a different request. Item 9C7 is a request to annex approximately 43 acres of property located on the north side of Lee Road 23, south of the Chawakla Ridge subdivision. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its September 11th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion as second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing a hearing done, any comments or questions?
I have a brief question.
Please.
This is going to be annexed if it's voted in as rural, and is it intended to stay rural?
Corrected, it comes in as rural, and our planning director can speak to that from what he knows.
Yeah, there's, there's no other option for it, pretty much. I mean, it'd have to stay rural, just kind of with the location. Only thing that it could be, I'd have to check if it's in the watershed specifically, but it wouldn't be able to upzone anything any denser. So for 43 acres, you'd get 13, 14 lots, pretty much, just kind of, like I said, even if they were able to take advantage of conservation, it'd only be 14 lots, so that's not changing.
And I do apologize, it's the October 9th meeting, the Planning Commission heard this, not September, so just FYI.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, Lindsay.
Mormon.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Anders.
Yes.
All right, for resolutions, item 10A1 is a request for conditional use approval of a performance residential use of five-unit multi, multiple unit development townhouses on approximately 1.21 acres of property located at 397 Martin Avenue in the redevelopment district zoning district. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its October 9th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Pay for approval.
Second. We have a motion as second. This time I'll open the public here. If you'd like to address the city council on this particular issue, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak to the council. Seeing no one will close the public here. Any comments or questions from the council?
I'd like to ask, city manager, tell us why this is or is not an ADDU development?
I'll have our planning director speak to that.
Yeah, thank you. So the definition of ADDUs has to do with the percentage of private open, of private space and common space within a development within insider structure, and so the ratio is 50%, greater than 50% common space for something to be considered a single-family house. And then I guess, also, I guess I'll go to the, pretty much they exceed that, and so this is not an ADDU. So ADDUs are normally fee simple, the, it's, normally you see the five beds, five baths kind of deal, they're all inside, but they'll have to submit a, the floor plans too, is they'll have to be verified, so that'll be a comment, something that we'll verify in
So, you as a planning commissioner, or, excuse me, the planning director, can make that determination, whether it's ADDU, private dormitory, or something other than that?
Correct, and so normally, like, what we'll have, like, kind of in the, in, in between the distinction, like I said, it's the common space and private space within, within, within a structure, then also the MUD is also the multiple structures on one lot, since they're not subdivided, they're just adding to the density that they can on this lot with the multiple structures. And all the, and all the parking, like I said, it's just all on the same lot, that's one of the things that also distinguishes, makes things townhomes, when the parking is all on one lot, but that's, that's be simple development, this is not that.
Since the regulations have been in place, it's planning director's call, but it, it does have to do with percentage of common area versus what's in bedrooms and other things, so, and this has been something that's been utilized citywide for a while now.
The zoning on this is RDD?
Yes, redevelopment district.
And five unrelated persons can live?
Yeah, that's correct.
And each, how, how many buildings are there, I forget?
Five.
Five, so that, five in each building, or five total on the?
Five in each building.
Has the traffic impact of this development been determined?
Yeah, I don't think this would, this requires, yeah, yeah, so, so, I was gonna say, this, this doesn't meet the threshold for, for traffic impact study.
Randy, do you want to just speak quickly to the threshold, please?
Yes, we do have minimum kind of thresholds for when they are required for different uses, and this one being the size that it is, did not trigger the need for a traffic impact study.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Item tenA2 is a request for conditional use approval of one, of a performance residential use, one academic detached dwelling unit on approximately point one-nine acres of property located at four-one-five North Ross Street in the corridor redevelopment district, urban zoning district. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request by a vote of seven to zero at its October ninth meeting, a public hearing is required.
May for approval?
Second.
We have a motion to second, I'll open the public hearing, if you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, you have five minutes to speak to the council. Okay, seeing no one will close the public hearing, any comments or questions?
The only thing that bothered me about this is that it was a very small piece of land, and there are six parking places on there, and the parking is three behind three. And I understand that this has been done elsewhere and has been moderately successful.
Hold on a second, Tom, okay, try again.
I don't want to, I don't want to claim moderate success, I, I, what I will say is that this has, this has been implemented, kind of at different scales, and I think increasingly, I'd say probably over the past eight, eight months. We've talked about internally that tandem parking is probably something that we need to formulate and kind of make a, a decision on, if that's something that we're gonna allow, kind of at scale. The scenario, this scenario where there are six parking spaces and there's only, they're all living together, this is probably the preferred model, rather than this kind of being in a bigger development where there'll be tandem parking of, say, twenty parking spaces behind twenty parking spaces, and all those people don't live together, and then they're out there calling down to the front desk, kind of get people out. So this on a much, on a micro scale, does work kind of for this development, and also the parking configuration is a zoning requirement, not necessarily tandem parking, but parking cannot be on the front of the building, forcing people to then back out onto the street to get out of a parking space, that is something that is not allowed in the manual. That was one of the reasons that this did not come forward several months ago under different ownership. So the parking configuration, like I said, is driven by zoning, and then also tandem parking is one of the things that people have been utilizing as, as a solution to getting parking onsite in some of these scenarios.
And how, how common is this, would you say?
I would say over the past, I think over the past like eight months, I think I've seen it four times on, on all the developments. Like I said, and, and like I said, on, on varying scales, and I said, they, they've kind of come with the accommodation of, of a management arrangement with it, that, that way, like I said, it's not a situation where, like, you're in a building, you may be on one floor, but someone on a different floor has parked behind you, you don't know who it is. So that, those are some of the things that we have mandated, like I said, we, we've recognized this internally, that this is something that we need to talk with, just because kind of from a geographical standpoint, this allows people to kind of get around, drive aisles and those different things, it's, it's a geometry issue that is driving people to seek this solution.
You obviously don't have reserved parking, or assigned parking, in this case, I mean, it's, you just grab one.
Theoretically, that, that can happen, meaning, in, in the dark ages of time, I lived with tandem parking in a much different city, and those were assigned by the unit, and so you had to deal with, with, justice is referring to, you had to deal with your own roommate, which is, I need your car keys, or I'm getting you out of bed at five AM when I need to go, and you don't want that. But it is, to your point, Councilman Mormon, it's, it's challenging for the residents, but they're also signing up for it, and I think what our staff is saying is, we want to get a better handle on regulating these differently, so you may see some now, but it looks like we're going to be putting forward some regulations to, to make sure that we do this. At the end of the day, then, that also becomes a market condition, if, if people don't care for that style of parking, they may not choose to rent the unit, but I think the bigger concern for the council with these becomes, and one-off projects, is, we don't want us three people parking on the property and three people parking on the street irritating their neighbors or longtime residents, and I, you know, when you asked me a question initially about it, I figured that was one of the lenses you were coming from. Most of you, this is Councilman Griswold's ward in this vicinity, but we have some longtime residents in the area, Martin Avenue, Hudson Terrace, other places that are constantly contacting a number of council members, and they are, they have been there a very long time, and they're constantly reaching out about street parking. And we are sometimes sending public safety out to deal with aspects of that, and I can recommend to anybody listening, do not park in the wrong direction on these streets, or you're likely to get ticketed when we get one of those phone calls. And don't block people's driveways, but that's, that's the dynamic here that's a challenge, and I understand where you're coming from, and regulatory wise, I don't, no justice, do we have the right to tell them, we just can't allow it, the ordinance doesn't speak to it?
Yeah, I guess right now with the ordinance not speaking to it, I guess we can say that there's a confident in, in that parking solution, like I said, I think we have, we have made parking the issue on this site in, in the past, and parking configuration is a reason for us not to approve DRT plans. So if, if this is something that staff did not have confidence in, kind of from the shared drive aspect, or people backing out, if people are able to maneuver, then we would deny it, and that has happened in the past.
Do we recall, and this may be public works question or city engineering question, that section of Ross Street is not somewhere you want to be parking on the street, and we don't see it, but is it flat-out prohibited?
It is not flat-out prohibited from a yellow curb standpoint.
But it is not wise.
However, it is not wise, and public safety could probably enforce no parking based on hindrance to other vehicles and traffic movement.
You may get, speaking of citizens, there's a house right there on the corner, that's been there for a long time, and it's, uh, well-protected by landscaping.
Yes, we redid a lot of that landscaping when we widened in that area.
And look, the house that this is potentially replacing was a tired old house that wasn't being well taken care of, at least visually from the curb, but, um, those residents that have been living in that house, that are living their quiet life, is, are there gonna be some protections, are there some clear divisions as to, um, you know, the functionality in the, in the lots? I mean, there won't be a mistake that you can go park behind their house, or?
Yeah, so, 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 yeah, so, anybody who's ever, who's, who's driven on Ross, I think in the past month, since the sign has been up, has also noticed the not-for-sale sign, that lady's house, she came to the planning commission, I think the only real dispute, I think, right now is the shared driveway and the easement access, that was mentioned at planning commission, that's gonna be something that we've also identified on the staff level, that's gonna have to be spoken to in the DRT process, uh, as, as well. So, so that drive aisle, I guess, current, the current solution that they have proposed would allow them to have the space to maintain that shared access agreement, like I said, that was one of, that was a riveting discussion at planning commission about the shared access, the easement, allowing the cars to maneuver to not encroaching the neighbor, and I think she, the, the neighbor there is definitely motivated to ensure that, that they honor it, so.
That does surprise me, well, I hope we'll do that.
And you think, though, if the council indulges and you're inclined to approve this, we could clarify that there is no on-street parking allowed in this, this block from Drake to Opalika Road by bringing an ordinance forward that, I mean, uh, yeah, it's an ordinance that clarifies no on-street parking, because it's not, it's kind of like aspects of Gay Street, if you're not blocking the, the lane, you know, people like to, if they're not blocking a bike lane, they just like to park on Gay Street, and I, I don't recommend that, but they do it anyway, and then we have pandemonium.
Well, they're sitting that far from the intersection.
No, 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 it's a tight area, so we can also shore that up, but that's up to the council.
I wanted to ask, okay, so on this, uh, A two and A one, how, how is this, are they gonna be near each other? Are they close to one another, because I see both of them are on, near Ross and Martin?
One's, one's down, uh, Martin and North Ross, and the other is between Drake and Opalika Road, so they're close by a, a block or so, but not that close.
Okay, so how, how many units are we talking about for number two? Just one?
One.
And for number one, just one?
There were five.
Five. So, traffic, parking, in that area, that seems like to me it's already congested away in that area, as it is.
Yeah.
So that's gonna bring in a lot of cars.
So, so for the, so for the four fifteen, North, North Ross, so that, that's why, like I said, that there's a lot of discussion about kind of what the configuration of the parking needs to be, because the main concern, and I think staff's position has been, we are not gonna allow anything where, where parking configuration mandates that the drivers back out onto Ross to get out of their parking spots, and so that, that's why the, the focus is pushing a lot of the parking to the back of the lot. Now, that's also an aesthetic requirement in the, in the corridor redevelopment district as well.
So one of them considered, uh, town, townhouse homes, and the other one is ADDUs. So the townhomes, they're not stu, and I know I'm going back to the first.
Yeah, so, so, so townhomes is really just more the name, townhomes isn't necessarily the building type, since townhomes, to get into this again, the, the, townhomes can be on multiple lots, it can, can be on multiple lots, kind of be simple development, that's kind of attached single-family housing, but then you have townhomes where they function like this as an MUD, but it's really just multiple structures on one lot where they're not subdivided.
It looks like a townhouse, but it's, it's sharing a property with others, what we define as a townhouse in our zoning ordinance, technically is you own the, the property under your structure, but they would be more than two plus in a row, or three, whatever the requirement is.
Yeah, 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 so, so the minimum for, for townhomes are three, three attached structures, pretty much, but the ADDU, like I said, that's more of a, it, it looks like a single-family house from the front, but the amount of private space within it, and private space being the bedroom and the bathrooms dedicated in it, so when you see those five beds, five baths, you know, or five and a half baths kind of deal, and they're all within bedrooms, normally that's going to tip the private space ratio above fifty percent, that would then make it meet the definition in our zoning ordinance of a, a ta, academic detached dwelling.
But Connie, from the outside, these could look almost identical, I think, from your, your practical side that you're getting at, is, there's a lot that goes into the interior of these and the technical nuances, but for the average citizen, and for our council members, these look almost identical on the outside, and theoretically, they both will be having five students living, living in each of these units.
I'm familiar with the ADDU.
Yeah, you live right by, yes, ma'am.
So that's why, that's the reason why I'm sort of concerned about this, um, development.
Tandem parking, do, do we, we don't have the ability to, um, regulate how it's done.
No, we definitely do, so, so I guess that, that's more of a construction and engineering manual thing, uh, I, I started currently on a different development in another part of town, there's a big, they've, they've, they've reached out to us, they've reached out to us on several occasions trying to mitigate and lessen their drive aisle width, their drive aisle width, and that's something that's mandated in the construction and engineering manual. Um, so, so that, like I said, that's just something that's an internal discussion that we need to have, and kind of make a decision about standards that we would like to tie to tandem parking, like I said, because it's becoming more pervasive, because it's a geometry solution to a lot of the urban infill that's going on, or these urban developments that they're doing.
Yeah, so, in other words, in a, in our technical meetings, we'll deal with whether or not this is adequate from a maneuverability standpoint, and if we don't deem that the cars can maneuver adequately on the side and, and pull out in a forward fashion, then they could not proceed ultimately. They're gonna have to be able to engineer it to our satisfaction. And it wouldn't, wouldn't be on here typically if they didn't think that they could.
I mean, my daughter plays this little game where you try to move cars out of different places and stuff, and, and this, uh, this evokes some of those challenges, it looks fine.
Yeah, and I, I think kind of one of the things with this, and like the zoning district, corridor redevelopment, a lot of the, a lot of these zoning districts in the, in the redevelopment areas, we're looking at some of these older lots that are very small, that are really kind of non-compliant, and don't really lend themselves to any other housing topology, a lot of that has to do with, this was thought about in assemblage, that these smaller parcels would be put together, and there'd be bigger structures put there, not, you know, there'd be a scraping redevelopment without any other assemblage, and that's, that's also part of the problem here, there's really nothing else that could go here.
You could not put a small tiny house there, it wouldn't, it wouldn't fit, or it doesn't fit from a market perspective.
Yeah, yeah, so, so a tiny house wouldn't fit from like a market perspective, but I guess, I guess.
Theoretically, it would, but, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess like from, from, like, a bigger MUD, or like a bigger townhouse development with, that, like, it, it doesn't, it doesn't fit from that perspective, and people are kind of pursuing the marketability of an ADDU.
So if the council denied this, then what, what could they build there?
They could, yeah, I mean, I mean, they, they have a lot of options, I mean, there's, there's a lot, I mean, there's, from a performance development standpoint, I mean, they, they could do duplexes, they, they could do, uh, single-family housing, like, like I said, I mean, they, they have those options, it's just they're, they're pursuing the ADDU, and that, it's, they're looking at five beds, renting that, um, and that should drive in the parking, and so, like I said, and even if, I think we were to put, you know, reduced parking minimums for, for something like that, they have all said, they cannot rent bedrooms without a parking space to give to those people for the same price, so they're not interested in doing that. And so that's, this is a, this is a choice that they are making, no one is making them do five beds, they're choosing to do five beds, they could do four, it wouldn't be a problem, could do three, wouldn't be a problem, this, this is their choice.
Kelly? Most of this has already been mentioned, but I think there's a combination of things that, that raise concerns with me, and that's obviously the, the tiny, uh, lot line, the small lot, the interference with the folks who live on the corner with a shared driveway, uh, potential disturbance because of the small lot and an ADDU in the backyard of longtime residents, and the tandem parking, so I think all of those things generate concerns from, uh, from my perspective.
And I do respect those comments, um, however, if a single-family home were to be built with four to five bedrooms, they could still be leased out and individually, and you would still have the same problem. So, correct?
Yeah, correct, so we've had, so there's another development north of here, actually near Martin and, and Ross, that it's a combination of ADDUs and single-family housing, and they did that because single-family houses only require, only requires two parking spaces instead of the six for the five bedrooms. Like I said, it's a market choice by them, they oftentimes build the extra parking space so they can rent it out at the same price of the other bedrooms. And so, to answer, yes, they could just, they could change the, the internal configuration, have more common space than private space, be classified as a single-family house, and only be required to build two parking spaces instead of the six, that is correct.
Which could potentially be a bigger problem with regard to parking as, as proposed in this.
Correct, because then they would not have the necessary onsite parking for their other three tenants, which would then drive them to maybe park across the street, or park further down the street in other people's neighborhoods, that is correct.
Okay.
Would there be a DRT associated with this?
Yes.
So that would leave you the option of saying, no, that's not sufficient.
Yeah, so, but, so, I, I guess on, on our end, we would, we don't have the tools to, to deny a single-family house that isn't, that doesn't have five parking spaces, like, single-family housing, and right now, only requires two parking spaces, off-site parking spaces, and so they could build that, and like I said, I mean, leave it to the rest, leave it to their tenants to kind of fend for themselves, that, that's, that's not something we, we'd be able to control.
You do have the applicant here, should you need to ask them any questions.
Doesn't sound like a good market plan there to have five, uh, five occupants in, in only two parking spaces.
I, I think they'd agree with you, that's why they tried to build six parking spaces.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we've got a motion to second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Why don't you do hands, so we can be clear?
All in favor, uh, please raise your right hand, okay?
Right hand.
Right hand. Not in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes.
Item tenA3 is a request for conditional use approval of a performance residential use of three-unit, multiple-unit development on approximately point six acres, which is currently two lots that would be combined into one, located at six-one-three and six-one-five Laverne Avenue in the development district housing zoning district. The Planning Commission did not recommend approval of this request by a vote of two to five at its October ninth meeting, a public hearing is required.
May for approval?
Second. We have a motion to second, this time we'll open the public hearing, if you'd like to address the city council on this, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, you have five minutes to speak. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jessica Rosart, I reside at eight-zero-two Geneva Street, Opalika, Alabama.
Thank you.
Good evening, I am the building designer on this project, I'm representing the owners, and we went before planning, uh, what was that, it was earlier in October, sorry, I forget the date. Several of the neighbors expressed many concerns, and so I'm approaching the podium to address any questions or concerns of the neighbors, I think, uh, they were under an impression that was inaccurate. What we want to do is, in this neighborhood, uh, pardon me, have some nerves, anyway.
You're doing fine.
In this neighborhood, what is allowable is single-family residence, if you're looking at the floor plans provided, we're addressing that with the floor plan, it's got a primary bedroom with an en suite, and then upstairs you'll have smaller bedrooms. So we're addressing that, basically, the owners bought these two lots, and they wanted to do, they wanted to do more units, but then, as I did the research on zoning, we realized that this is as many units as we're allowed to do in zoning code. So everything you see there is in compliance with zoning, the, uh, under conditions, the third unit, uh, you know, we're, we were seeking conditional approval for the third unit, basically. The owners want to combine the two lots, build three houses that will be rental units, but they will maintain ownership, they won't be platted out separate, they won't be condoed, they will maintain ownership and rent them.
Excuse me.
I think that's pretty much it in a nutshell, it, there's no intention for student housing, we're providing off-street parking, it's just, uh, parking pads, driveway situation. Um, I've got enough room for really about four vehicles per house, they're three-bedroom houses. Um, I've got enough room for really about four vehicles per house. They're three-bedroom houses. Yes, sir.
We all read your letter. It's very good.
Thank you.
Just wanted you to know we got it.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Taylor was kind enough to call me and ask some questions too, but I wanted, there was a lot of misconstrued information at planning, and I wanted to clear the air.
I have a quick question, if I may.
Yes.
Are you planning to rent by the bed?
No, sir. They'll be rented by the unit.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, but if we have further questions, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes. Uh, okay, so you're saying that you're not gonna be renting them by the bed. You've got three bed, bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms. Okay, but if, if I decide to, these are rentals. If I rent, and, well, let me just ask this, this question first. So do you know what the, uh, rental fees are gonna be, or do you have any idea as how much y'all reading these things for?
No, ma'am. I, I imagine the client will determine that fee based on market rate at the time construction is complete.
Okay. So with that being said, I don't think if, even if you rent them out, uh, I mean, what, what guarantees, uh, the neighbors that they won't be rented out by the room, and if they don't, you know, it could be all in one lump sum, and you still, I would think that you would still could rent them to students. I mean, it's not, you, you, how, how's you gonna determine, I guess?
My understanding is there are zoning ordinances in place in the city, and a neighbor could report said residence. If there's two, more than two people unrelated in that house, they could report it, and the city can't address it.
But, and I understand that, but who's gonna know in that neighborhood whether they're related or not?
I don't have, I don't have the answer you're looking for there, but there are, there are safeguards to prevent that from happening.
Megan, if a, if a neighbor made a complaint.
They make a complaint to the city, and then it's incumbent upon the city to investigate it. All the neighbor has to do is say that they're concerned, and then we investigate that and follow up. That, it wouldn't fall on the property owner either. However, the property owner, um, if it was, was found to be true, then there's issues for both the tenants and the property owners at that time.
Nor would it fall on the neighbor to know whether or not they were.
No, they just have to say, we're concerned about this, and that, that happens, um, fairly frequently all over Auburn. So. And I, I would say to the point of rent by the bedroom is, I, I think this council's been through the paces with that, and not saying that this property owner doesn't intend to stick with that. I will remind you, you don't have any regulatory control over how they rent their units. And from my fair housing perspective, students are people, and you, you just rent units to people.
Yeah.
Yet the complication remains that there are three beds, and three unrelated students have the opportunity to move into there. And then the burden rela, falls onto the neighbors to police that.
And so, and then, you know, with these, as, as she indicated, i- if you just left these as two lots, they can build a house on each of the lots, probably, and just do two houses, and they can do that permitted by right without being before you. And I'm not, it's not that they're threatening that or whatever. This is, this is, they're looking based on the size of the property to do this, but they have that ability to build houses by right with a number of bedrooms, and it could be more than three.
Yeah, so, kind of similar to, to our last discussion, I mean, if they were to build, uh, I guess they're nine beds here. If they were to build a four-bed and a five-bedroom house, um, they, and they're both single-family, just kind of meeting the ratio of kind of with more common spaces than, than private space, they'd only be required to build, uh, two parking spaces for each. And so, I mean, they, they still could meet that. And I guess we'd run back into the family definition, would not be able to rent by the bed, and if there was ever reported to the city that there are more than two, two unrelated people living there, then the city would try to verify that information and go from there.
Okay, so I guess, um, my problem with, with this development, and I, and I guess I, I wanted to really make my comments probably after we, this opened the public hearing, so I'll just wait on my comments before.
Any other questions for applicant, applicants represented? Okay, we might have some more questions, and we'll ask you, come back for them. Thank you so much. Yep. Yep. Who'll be next? Anyone else like to speak at the public hearing? Yes, ma'am. Hey.
My name is Tanger Shealy, and I'm a resident of Donahue, and my mom is a resident of Laverne, and I'm speaking on her behalf. I just wanted to express my opposition to the proposed apartment development on Laverne. Um, and I respectfully requested the board commission deny the pro, proposal for the reason outlined. The impact of the neighborhood character and scale, and what I mean is that the proposed development appears to be a much higher density, height, and scale based on the surrounding area of the single-family homes that's over there on that street. Number two, traffic and parking structure concerns. In addition to units, multiple units will increase traffic congestion and parking demand, and it's already a busy street with limited space. Number three, also there's elderly people and children on that road. Some of the neighbors use the cul-de-sac for exercise. The kids come out and play and ride their bikes. And I feel like with that type of development, it's gonna be more traffic, and they won't be able to utilize that space. And also I just want to say, I do oppose the proposal as submitted, but I'm not opposed to the appropriate development that is compatible with neighborhood of single-family homes. In conclusion, I urge the commission to uphold the interest in current residents and preserve the livability and character of our neighborhood. Thanks for your attention and my comments, and I trust that you make a valued decision for our community.
Okay, thank you very much.
Shealy, real quick, can we just get your address on Donahue for the record?
Six oh eight Laverne.
Laverne, oh, six oh eight Laverne. Okay, we'll use that one. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Who'll be next? Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening to the council.
Good evening.
Mayor Anderson, good to see you. Max, good to see you. I'm Taylor. Charles Campbell, I'm a resident of seven six seven North Donahue Drive, so, uh, my wife and I's property is, um, our backyard directly is right behind this property, or actually faces this property in with face, or the, maybe the rear side of at least two of these, these units that have been proposed. And so just, um, and after kind of hearing, um, everything at the, uh, Planning Commission two weeks ago, and actually talking, having the conversation afterwards with the presenting party, um, I think our concerns were just, you know, you know, where there was a lot, and like I said, development happens all the time, understand progress and growth, and we just want to make sure that the ordinances are followed the way they are, um, as it being designated family housing. I know their concerns because, you know, I think the other side of Donahue, to a certain degree, has been designated for multi-use, so where, you know, I moved in two thousand nine, there were single-family homes on that side of the street. Um, now those are multi-units, more student-facing, and so there's more traffic, a little bit more, a little bit more noise there than it used to be. Um, but, um, on this side of the street coming down Laverne, um, it's all families. Um, I think there's a house next to us on the corner of Laverne. Um, there's, I mean, there's a family there that may be renting, but there's a lot more traffic there, a lot more cars, and so I think just a concern of more congestion. I think where I see what my wife and I have discussed is just, you know, maybe more communication from the, uh, developers or builders to kind of understand better, better what's going on. And like my neighbor just said, um, as well, you know, um, as long as it's single-family use, I don't think there's an issue. It's just making sure that everything is convenient and be respectful of the families that have already been there, be respectful of the size of the homes in the neighborhood that's been there. Uh, but if it were to kind of go into multi-person use and whatnot, that would be our biggest concern, is more parking, more strain on the already strained infrastructure. We've seen growth, tremendous growth in Auburn. Um, as soon as I got here in ninety-nine as a freshman, but now working at the university and going, going on to other parts of my career, we know that Auburn's grown a whole lot, and, uh, we're proud of it. And, um, definitely proud of that as well. I'm proud of what's happening in, in my neighborhood and my ward, in my di- district, and my, uh, wife and I. Definitely want to raise our family here and keep moving, but, uh, we definitely are, you know, want to see that. The city has good plans about infrastructure, traffic, parking, all those things that go forth. And so that was where our concerns are, just making sure that we are honoring the zoning code that's already there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for speaking to us. Who'll be next? Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Ms. Taylor, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, um, actually, I, I, I pretty much grew up in that neigh- neighborhood over by Laverne. I actually lived in Ridge Crest and, um, in other areas in that, um, vicinity. And Laverne, actually, I didn't even know the street was named Laverne until this development came up. I always thought, because the street opposite of it is Hutcherson. So, but, with that being said, I've always known it to be a really, really quiet neighborhood. I even remember houses, the houses that used to be in that neighborhood before some of the houses that was built now. And I had some concerns, and I think some of my, some of the neighbors may be a little shy about standing up, but I'm, I'm gonna speak for them because they have, you know, came to me and they talked to me about their concerns. And, uh, one of the, the concerns is the development is, uh, is gonna, that the developers are trying to put there. First of all, the lot is pretty small, even though it's two lots. They are pretty small lots. And to get three houses on those, on two lots with the size of the lots, I don't think that that is, is gonna, is really not compatible. And it's really not compatible with the, with the neighborhood houses that's there now, even the type of housing that is proposed to be built. I can understand, uh, when it, when it comes down to parking, and I can a- also, uh, relate to when it comes down to, um, traffic. Until I went over and I actually looked at those, uh, to that, in that neighborhood, since they've grown a little bit, and more houses is over there, new houses and stuff, I didn't even realize that there was a gateway to the cemetery. So there's an opening and a gate there. So you already, uh, have people sometime maybe visiting in cemetery. There may parks out there sometime, the, um, and there's, you know, other neigh, the neighbors. And if you get a whole, whole lot of housing, parks in that area, it's gonna, it's gonna, um, it's gonna bring on more traffic. It's gonna bring on more, because I don't care if you, um, decide to build two, three houses in the neighborhood. And especially talking about three bedrooms, three and a half baths with four, um, I guess these are, um, what is the, the driveways that are hold four parks. So three and four, that's twelve, twelve cars that's gonna be parked in that neighborhood. I don't think that the neighbors have a problem with development there, but I don't, I know that they don't, they're not wanting twelve extra parks on a street, on a cul-de-sac that probably is lo, about as long as this monitor here. And, uh, I've drove over there lots and lots, passed by it a lot of time, and it's already congested up in there. So to add three more houses in that neighborhood is not feasible. It's not, and it's, and it's not feasible for the street or the neighbors that already live there, they're already having parking problems in that neighborhood. Once again, they mentioned children. There's children in the neighborhood, which is, we just discussed about safety, um, traffic, talking about safety. So it's, it's not really safe for, it ain't, it ain't like the street goes from, uh, you come in and you go out in another direction. You actually have to turn around and come back out the same way. So it's, it's really tight. It's really tight up in there right now. So, uh, I'm not going to, um, I, I just don't think that this proposal that sits in front of us right now, I don't think that, that, uh, I'm not going to, um, I'm not gonna agree with this development. So.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Taylor. Want a clarification on something that Justice said, just so I make sure that I understand this. If this council were to, um, deny this proposal, the property owner could build a four-bedroom and a five-bedroom house on this property and get the se, have two structures and get the same number of beds, but only be required to have two, four parking spots total?
That is correct. So, like I said, so the distinction in single-family housing and A D D U's is the common and private space within the structure. And single-family housing is, as long as they meet, the ratio would be, would allow them to only build two parking spaces. And so for places that don't have garages, it's really just kind of the driveway to the door pretty much, and that meets, because the only thing that we have that designates what parking is, is defined on like the actual area of it. So the length of the park, the length and width of a parking space, pretty much. If you have two of those from a square-footage standpoint, you have two parking, off-site parking spaces.
And they can do that by right?
Yeah, that is correct. You can do that by right and, and D D H.
They could also theoretically build more parking than the two spaces with those, it, it would be up to them. And it's also a function of impervious surface ratio and some other things, but yes, theoretically, they only have to build two spaces per single-family detached house.
So just to make sure that the expectations are set, we could, we could deny this and, and rental houses could still go up there, and it, they could be leased to the same, you have the same number of people living in them as you would the three, the three homes, and possibly, uh, the same number of cars.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, technically, I mean, there's so, there could be more, honestly, like if there were six people in each house of this, like it was a, like a family and they have four kids each or something like that. Um, but I, yes, so, 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 yeah, so each, each, the only thing, thing that stops that is if it was unrelated and they reported that to the city, and then we found that investigation, then kind of go from there.
Can we speak to the future land use map identifies this area as neighborhood preservation? Can you, um, explain what that means?
Yeah, certainly. So neighborhood preservation kind of speaks to what the existing character is of, uh, neighborhood, and so that really kind of goes from use, size, like lot size, green space, canopy, um, just really kind of the housing's policy and things like that. And so from a neighborhood preservation standpoint, really what informs that from the, for the future is the existing homes on that street. And so there's a lot of single-family houses over there that are either close to the street, you know, canopy and things like that. Really don't try to disturb the character by adding in a different use or more intense use, or something that is just completely different from the existing character of the street. Uh, and like I said, normally that's mirrored over our D D H neighborhoods and our N C neighborhoods.
Is that more like an overlay, um, designation or?
Not an overlay, it's the future land use plan. And so the future land use is what we look at on some of the conditional uses and the fu, and the, uh, rezonings. And so from a conditional use standpoint, when we get that, this is one of the things that we consider, and this was one of the points of opposition for the Planning Commission. They did not think that this was in line with the character. They did not think the, they thought it was completely out of line with, with the rest of Laverne Street, pretty much, and Laverne Avenue.
Yeah, and focusing on the land use plan, I mean, you, you guys are taking a hard look at it, and yes, for undeveloped property or property that is redeveloping, it's supposed to help provide a guide for what's to come. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I think my concerns are similar to Councilwoman Taylor's. Um, D D H is one less, uh, just slightly, uh, less restrictive than neighborhood conservation. The, the design as presented here, I don't think is in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. And while I appreciate the, the sentiment that the owner may be present and rent the other structures, uh, time is a complicated factor here, and any, all sorts of c- conditions could alter those, you know, proposed goals. Uh, and then we're left with three buildings that are not, uh, in keeping with the neighborhood. So for those reasons, uh, I, I don't feel confident, uh, or comfortable supporting this proposal.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? We have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
You want nay, correct, okay. Alright, so that item did not...
Item four?
You ready? Okay. Item 10A4 is a request for conditional use approval of a performance residential use of three-unit, multi, multiple-unit development on approximately .3 acres of property located on the west side of Country Club Lane in the Corridor Redevelopment District Suburban Zoning District. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request by a vote of seven to zero, and at its October 9th meeting, a public hearing is required. You can think of this development as a, a triplex, in essence.
May for approval.
Second. Motion of second. This time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to speak to the council. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
I look forward to improved roads in this area. I think, uh, the roads are not good, if I remember right. And, um, so, will that be part of the project?
Will our staff speak? We add an adjacent road to this. It's a private road that's, that's improving tremendously, but this one, Country Club Lane, Randy?
Yes, so, um, as part of this, you know, we will have them up, make updates to public streets as necessary, but we don't have them make updates necessarily to private streets.
Can hope. Is Country Club Road private or, or city?
It's, it's public.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Country Club is public.
It's the adjacent one that is not.
Yeah.
You approved the development off of Duke Circle.
Yeah, Duke Circle.
And Duke Circle is private. Councilman Adams dealt with that on behalf of his constituents, um, a year or two ago. I can't recall exactly, and we, um, from Inspection Services, went out for health, safety, welfare reasons, and, and asked the private sector owner of that to get some things corrected, which they did, but now, that's redeveloping. And so, these are just, Country Club Lane is, is, is a narrow public street, but in reasonable condition typically. But anything the development causes, well, they'll have to correct.
Yeah, if, if through the course of their development, they degrade the road beyond what it is existing, they would have to make those improvements to bring it back up to precondition standards or better.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries.
Item 10A5 was withdrawn at the request of the applicant. So, item 10B assigns to the vacation of various easements associated with 141 Wright Street, 134 Tumer Street, and 140 Tumer Street, and further authorizes the mayor and city manager to execute a quitclaim deed relinquishing the properties to 141 Wright LLC and the Market Auburn LLC. It should be noted that the dedication and acceptance of new easements was already adopted this evening as part of the consent agenda, um, agenda item 8C1. A public hearing is required.
May for approval.
Second. We have a motion of second. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. So, we're closing the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? We have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Alright.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay, this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. If you'd like to address the City Council about anything, this will be your time to come forward. You have three minutes to speak. We'd ask that you give us your name and address for the record, and please address your comments to the City Council. Anyone? Okay, we'll close citizens' open forum. Any comments from the council? Alright, so move to adjourn. So move.